Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's March 4th Open Session Meeting. First, Ms. Costa, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Steingasser?
Present.
Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here, finally.
Okay, Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo, I know you're in the meeting. We'll come back. Commissioner White?
Present.
Yes. Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Not here.
And Commissioner Argo?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Also, Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, the Director of Urban Design and Plan Review, are in attendance at the meeting. So, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days on video on our website. If there's no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business, and we will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would also like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19, both in our nation and around the world. Thank you. So, in response to the COVID-19 guidance on public gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. Votes by the commission will be conducted by roll call. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any questions or comments. During deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run the March meeting, which is our second agenda item. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Second.
And the motion is to have...
I nominate you vice chair White.
Thank you. And seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Julia, I'll have you.
Sure. I think, actually, that was seconded by Commissioner Wright and moved by Commissioner Steingasser. And so I'll go ahead and do the roll call. So Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And I do not believe Commissioner Ginsburg has joined the meeting yet.
Well, thank you. The eyes have it. Sorry for my stumble there, but thank you, fellow commissioners, for electing me to run this online meeting. Agenda item three is the report of the chairman. I have a few things to share with the commission. The commission previously elected Commissioner May to serve on the executive committee. And if there are no objections, Commissioner May will continue to serve in this role this month. I also want to note that at our April meeting, the commission will conduct the annual vote for a vice chair and also for two commissioners to serve on the executive committee. I'd also like to note some items related to commissioner members. Acting Administrator Katie Cale has informed me of her designated alternates to represent General Services Administration on the commission. Allison Azavado, Acting Commissioner of Public Building Services; Darren Blue, Acting Regional Administrator and Regional Commissioner; Mina Wright, Director, Office of Planning and Design Quality; and Kristy Tunstall-Williams, Deputy Director, Office of Planning and Design Quality. Also, Secretary Lloyd Austin has informed the commission of his designated alternates to represent the Department of Defense on the commission. Thomas Muir, Interim Director of Administration and Management, is the first alternate; and Paul McMahon, Junior Deputy Director, Facility Services Director at Washington Headquarters Services, is the second alternate. So, to both Paul and Mina, it's great to have you return to the commission and look forward to continuing to serve with you. So, agenda item four is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. As part of our ongoing work on security in public space, staff is conducting a series of online workshops to better address security needs and to test potential security interventions in different types of urban public spaces. The first workshops, held on February 10th and 16th, focused on Fergate Square to explore how to balance security interventions with public access and urban design considerations within a small urban park. Ultimately, the findings of these workshops will inform specific policies and guidance in a future update to the urban design element of the comprehensive plan. We thank our partners and participants, the Golden Triangle Bin, the National Park Service and Park Police, Commission of Fine Arts, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, and the District's Office of Planning, Department of Transportation, Metropolitan Police Department, and Homeland Security and Emergency Management Agency. We'll provide a briefing to the commission on the collective workshop findings at a future meeting. Finally, many thanks to our staff, led by Joe Adam McCrea and Melissa Lynn Shaw, for organizing these sessions. You have a written report in your packets, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the commission have any questions? Hearing none, we will move to agenda item five as the legislative update. Ms. Skyler?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to report today on the House of Representative Bill 1115. This bill authorizes a commemorative work on the National Mall to commemorate and honor the members of the armed services that served on active duty in the global war on terrorism. The bill was introduced in the House on February 18th and referred to the Committee on Natural Resources. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skyler. Does the commission have any questions? Hearing none, we will keep moving. There are no items on the consent calendar, so let's move on to the open session items, starting with agenda item 6A, and that is to approve preliminary and final site development plans for the Second Division Memorial Modification, as submitted by the United States Department of the Interior, National Park Service. Mr. Fliss?
Good afternoon. Can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you, and we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The National Park Service, in cooperation with the Second Indian Head Division Association Memorials Foundation, has submitted preliminary and final site development plans for the proposed modifications to the Second Division Memorial, which is located in Washington, D.C. The commission did review this project as a consent item back in November of 2019. So, the primary purpose of today's final review is to confirm the applicant has addressed the commission's previous comments. As this proposal is an expansion of an existing memorial, the primary planning and design questions really revolve around how this addition will complement the existing memorial and integrate into the landscape. So, just for reference, the memorial, existing memorial today, is located in President's Park, on the ellipse near Constitution Avenue and 17th Street. It's highlighted here. And then, just zooming in a little bit closer, you can see Constitution Avenue here on the south side, the White House and the ellipse again are up to the kind of upper right. And the memorial, which is highlighted here, sits in an open lawn. So here are a few images of the existing memorial. It includes this 18-foot-high sculpture of a hand grasping a flaming sword, and this is framed by a granite panel. As part of this memorial, there are also several inscriptions, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. In addition, there's some existing low landscaping that will be refreshed as part of this project. So here's another view of the site, looking east, Constitution Avenue is here on the right, and you can see the memorial here on the left. You'll notice in this image that there's not any direct pedestrian access to the memorial, so to get there, you actually have to cut across the grass to get to the memorial. So, this memorial has an interesting history, and it's actually been expanded over time. So, the original components, which were constructed in 1936, are shown here, the central portion. And this was constructed to honor those of the Second Army Division who gave their lives in World War I. Later, an addition was added in 1962. This included two wing walls, which you can see here on either side of that central panel, and these were added to honor those who died in World War I, as well as the Korean War. And then here, you can see a perspective view of the existing memorial today. Again, it's got that central framing element, and then the two wing walls. So, the memorial recognizes specific military campaigns. It doesn't include the individual names of individual soldiers, but here you can see those inscriptions today, again, dedicated to these different campaigns. So, in 2018, Congress authorized a modification to this memorial under the Commemorative Works Act to allow for the recognition of soldiers who gave their lives during other campaigns that are not currently listed. These include Korea in the demilitarized zone, Iraq, and then also Afghanistan. So, to address this design challenge, the proposed expansion doesn't alter the existing memorial fabric. However, the central part of the platform is actually expanded, extended to the south, with two new stone planks that are proposed to frame this central space, and these will match in height the existing wing walls without the coping. This option really maintains the hierarchy of the memorial, but it does allow for additional room for new inscriptions. And I'll also point out that this platform extension creates a more functional central space for visitors. So here, you can see the design progression of this memorial, starting with the original, the expansion, and then the proposal here. And then, just for reference, I'll note this is a very, very modest change. This element is only about 35 feet wide and about 12 feet deep, so I think it's less than 500 feet in area. And then here's a perspective of the proposed memorial. Again, the commission expressed support for this approach back at the concept review because it was consistent with the previous expansions of the memorial, doesn't create any pinch points for pedestrian, reinforces the frontality of the memorial, particularly with these steps, and then also, again, creates this gathering area, which would allow for visitors and also small ceremonies. And then here are some details regarding those proposed plints. Again, they will be inscribed to recognize these campaigns, not individuals. So overall, we think this expansion shares an architectural style with the original memorial components in a pretty seamless way. So, just now, moving on to some of the other aspects of the project. As I mentioned, the memorial includes a series of low steps today, and it also, again, sits in the middle of this lawn area, so it's not really accessible to everybody, particularly if you're in a wheelchair. The applicant has explored several solutions to address this, and ultimately, the commission expressed support at concept review for regrading the site at either side of the memorial here to allow for a flush access here, while retaining the front steps of the memorial, kind of preserving that kind of formality. This is the final design that the applicant has pursued. The applicant also previously submitted to the commission two options for access to the memorial, again, to address the fact that there's no pedestrian connection. They had looked at a linear, direct connection, then also a curvilinear approach. The second option here has a curved walkway that connects to Constitution Avenue on both ends, and is also reflective of kind of the pattern of development within President's Park. And so the commission had supported this approach, and then, again, this is also reflected in the applicant's final design. So, again, these walkways are similar to what occurs in President's Park today, so you can just see here some details and examples. And here, you can see the proposed walkway and the final site plan. And this alignment also avoids impacting the existing trees. I'll also note that the applicant addressed a concern raised by the commission about pedestrians cutting across the lawn, particularly when the original curvilinear design was much broader in the arc. That has been somewhat addressed now by pulling these two legs in a little bit closer, so the route is still curvilinear, but a little bit more direct, so you won't have that potential for somebody to try to cut across the line. I'll also note that there will be some smaller interpretive elements right here in front of the memorial on Constitution Avenue, and these are consistent with NPS standards, where pedestrians would be able to kind of understand what the memorial is if they're walking along Constitution Avenue. And, again, this is consistent with the commission's recommendations at concept review. Finally, the memorial will also include some new soft uplighting for the memorial itself, as well as the flagpoles. Here are just some details of those fixtures. I'll note also that, after consulting with staff, the number of fixtures was actually reduced, and the locations were adjusted to help minimize their visibility, and overall, we think this is sensitive to the memorials, as well as the context. So, overall, staff believes the memorial expansion is sensitively designed, and importantly, will also help improve access for visitors. So, staff is recommending the commission approve the preliminary and final site development plans for the Second Division Memorial Modification. Since I've already gone through the recommendation in my presentation, I will not repeat it, but I am happy to answer any questions. We also have members of the design team, as well as the park service, available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fliss. Before we begin the commission discussion, do any commissioners have questions for staff or the project representatives? If so, please remember to turn on your webcam and mic when asking to speak. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will now open it up to the commission for discussion. I will start with Commissioner May, and then go in a round robin format, using our normal seating order, and I ask you, please keep your webcams on during the discussion. So, Commissioner May?
Thank you very much. What can I say? I'm very happy with the design we have submitted. It's been, you know, some years in the making, and we're very fortunate to have a talented design team working for the applicant and working with us, and it's, I think it's very successful, and I hope that the rest of the commission agrees with me. I will note that the previous review was approved on consent, so it's been smooth sailing so far. So, but I'm happy to hear any more questions or comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. And one of the reasons we wanted to bring this forward publicly, so people could see how folks responded, and I know I'm going a little out of order, but I was really pleased to see how sensitively this was handled. So, congratulations on that. So, Commissioner Argo?
So, yes, Commissioner May, I agree with you. And it certainly appears as though suggestions were sensitively and fully integrated into the final design. It's lovely. And I think that's it for me.
Vice Chairman White, I think you're on mute.
I accidentally hit the... I'm so sorry. Commissioner Wright, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Whoops. Nothing very original. I think it's beautifully designed, very restrained, and I would like to thank the memorial sponsors for setting a good example by not insisting that we create enough room for individual names to be listed, which is how we seem to insist that memorials be designed these days, and I think to the detriment of their design. So, I want to thank them and the park service for leading the way.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
As usual, I'm usually brief, but I'm going to say I think it's a great job. It's very well done. I want to congratulate the staff, the proponents. It's all well done, very tasteful. I also support the idea of not having names on it. I kind of hate to be redundant, because I'm repeating what most people have said, but it's, at any rate, though, maybe I won't keep this up, but I just want to thank you very much. It's wonderful. I'm supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
I generally agree with everything everyone said. I think it's beautifully designed.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg? I'm not sure if you've been able to join us yet.
I have, and I did get to watch most of the presentation, which was lovely. I really appreciate it. Thanks so much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes, I'm glad this was not on consent, so the design team could hear all these compliments, because I fully agree. I think it's very tasteful, and it's a very moving, very well done.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
I can't really add much more to what the other commissioners have said. It's a very good design. I like looking at it, and I have no questions.
Thank you. And just to reemphasize the comments I made earlier, a little out of order, that was sort of a delightful conclusion, and when we saw the result, we did want to put it on the public agenda, and I do think it's a wonderful example for how we think about memorials and how we can add to something that's there and make it even more accessible and have more meaning and impact for people who experience the memorial. So, I do add my congratulations and thanks for getting us to this point. So, given that, is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final site development plans for the memorial modification?
Sorry. Commissioner Dixon moved? I'll second, but I'll also say, I think I should just retire now. The high point for the park service.
Be sure to invite us to the party, Peter. I'd like to mention my support for you, Peter, and park service, and what they did, and I think the chair was very wise, and I guess we, as the group would say, we should have it on the agenda. And I'd be verbose, but I guess sometimes that's what we, I don't know. At any rate, take care, bye for now.
I think we actually moved it to consent last time around, because we had so much on the agenda.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, thank you all very much, and I second the motion, and I'm not retiring.
So, I believe, Ms. Costa, that Commissioner Wright moved, or Commissioner Dixon moved, and Commissioner May seconded?
That's correct, and I'll go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
That was unanimously affirmative.
Thank you. The motion has carried. And Commissioner May, we'll let you retire for about 30 seconds, and then you have to come back to work. So, thank you. Agenda item 6B is next, and that's the adoption of the federal workplace element. So, Ms. Costa, I think you needed to add something here before we move into the agenda?
Yes, thank you. Because of my continuing role assisting the District of Columbia regarding the comprehensive plan, I'm recusing myself from this item, and Ms. Skyler will assist with procedural matters for this particular item.
And I am present and standing by.
Thank you, Ms. Skyler, and thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. DuPont, you may proceed.
Can you see the screen?
Yes, ma'am, and we can hear you.
Perfect. Let me do that again. Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. Today, I will give a status update of the federal workplace element. Staff is requesting that the commission approve amendments to only the boundary, definition, and policy of the central employment area, known as the CEA, in the 2016 federal workplace element. As a brief reminder, the comprehensive plan for the national capital is comprised of two parts: the district elements prepared by the D.C. Office of Planning, and the federal elements prepared by NCPC. The federal elements provide a policy framework for the federal government in managing its operations and activities in the region, and is the decision-making framework for the commission actions on plans and proposals submitted for your review. Our commission last adopted the federal workplace element in 2016. In July of 2019, the commission released a draft federal workplace element for a 60-day public comment period. In 2020, the novel coronavirus pandemic emerged and resulted in immediate changes to the federal workplace. Because of the unknown long-term implications of the current pandemic on the federal workplace, staff will put the full element update on hold, and in a year, will come back to the commission and provide another status update. Today, we're proposing only amendments to the 2016 federal workplace element, limited to changes to the CEA. During the public comment period, NCPC received comments from federal and local agencies, interest groups, and individuals on the 2019 draft element, as summarized in Appendix B. Since the public comment period, we've been working to address many of the comments related to telework and transit, subsidies, resilience and flooding, 60-40 policy, and the CEA. We are working closely with the district and GSA to address the 60-40 policy issue and identifying future locations for federal workplaces in Washington. The 2019 draft element considered trends and major drivers reshaping the federal government's footprint and influencing development in the region, like reduce the footprint and workplace mobility. However, it did not anticipate the impacts of the pandemic, which resulted in immediate changes to the economy and operations of the federal workplace. With almost a year into the pandemic, we still have the majority of our region's federal workforce still working remotely from home, and with the federal workforce working from home, the decrease in federal commuting has resulted in significant decline in metro rail ridership. And at the end of last year, approximately 10% of office workers had returned to their offices in downtown D.C. Weekday metro rail ridership was 87% lower than 2019, and Washington, D.C.'s office vacancy rate reached an all-time high of 15.9%. So, there are a lot of unknowns regarding the future of the federal workplace post-pandemic, so we'll continue to monitor how much telework will likely to continue, what the demand for office face will be, and how these factors will impact the federal real estate. Currently, we're requesting that the commission defer changes to the federal workplace element, while staff continues to work with the district and GSA to resolve the 60-40 policy direction, and continue to study the long-term impacts to the planning, location, and design of federal workplaces post-pandemic. While we like to update the element, while we like to put the element update on hold, we've identified an area that can be updated immediately. Just a reminder, staff is requesting that the commission approve only amendments to the CEA in the 2016 federal workplace element, as highlighted in Appendix A. The federal workplace element prioritizes the location of federal workplaces in Washington, D.C.'s CEA. The CEA is a contiguous boundary, which includes the region's primary commercial center, an area that incorporates the federal establishment's symbolic and physical heart, and is a hub of various transit systems. Most of the CEA's federal facilities are within a quarter mile of a metro station and is connected to the station by a network of walkable streets. The CEA has traditionally been defined within the comprehensive plan as a joint agreement between NCPC and the D.C. government. There have been boundary discrepancies between the federal and district elements since the 1990s, and as you can see, GSA also has a separate boundary. Past mayors have requested GSA to add select areas to their CEA boundary used for leasing purposes. NCPC received multiple comments to update the CEA to have one shared boundary between the district and federal elements, along with the GSA's defined CEA. the district and federal elements, along with the GSA's defined CEA. Over the past two years, NCPC and DCOP worked together in consultation with GSA and the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development to amend the CEA boundary to ensure that it reflects the District of Columbia's current priority areas for commercial development, mixed-use development, and transportation investments. If you look at the map, the red line shows the proposed CEA over NCPC's existing CEA boundaries, highlighted in yellow. The changes capture adjacent federal facilities, it removes areas no longer feasible based on existing planning development, and includes areas to be in alignment with DCOP's or GSA's CEA. This amendment reflects NCPC and the District's joint effort to make the CEA boundary and definition consistent in both the federal and district elements. The proposed CEA amendments in the district elements are currently before the Council of the District of Columbia as part of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Act of 2020. And if approved, NCPC and DCOP will work with GSA on using the revised CEA. NCPC staff received multiple comments from interest groups to add their properties to the revised CEA, and since the CEA boundary is contiguous, amendments do not include all of the requested properties. The revised element and policy acknowledges that there are other federal employment areas outside of the CEA and to consider locations where local land use conditions support the efficiency and productivity of federal activities. This amendment adds two new action items for the federal workplace element to be included in the comprehensive plan's action plan. And as a reminder, the action plan contains specific projects to advance the Commission's vision and the necessary steps to activate the plan's goals and policy. And as a future action item, NCPC will work with GSA, the District of Columbia, and other stakeholders to consider other approaches to the CEA to designate locations, including non-contiguous sites for future federal facility and uses. Another action item is to collaborate with federal, regional, and local jurisdictions to identify appropriate federal employee locations in the region outside of the central employment area. It is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approve the amendments to the boundary and definition of the CEA in the 2016 federal workplace element, approve the new action items to be included in the comprehensive plan's action plan, defers action on further changes to the federal workplace element while staff continues to study the potential long-term impacts to the planning, location, and design of federal workplaces post-pandemic. Notes the NCPC and DCOP work together in consultation with GSA and DEMPED to update the boundary and definition to be consistent in the federal district elements. NCPC and DCOP will continue to work with GSA to encourage them to use the amended CEA as part of their site selection and leasing solicitation process. Notes the old CEA and policy in the 2016 federal workplace element will remain in effect for 60 days after the publication of the Federal Register announcing the adoption of the revised element. And notes for projects with special and unusual circumstances, applicant agencies can consult with NCPC staff. And notes following Commission adoption, staff will incorporate any changes as directed by the Commission and will complete minor editorial updates to the text and graphic to ensure document accuracy and consistency. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Dupont. I'll now ask if the Commission members have any questions for Ms. Dupont. Mr. May?
Yeah, one question. I was curious about the expansion of the CEA to Buzzard Point, which we understand the future development is primarily residential and retail as opposed to office space, but maybe I don't have that right.
Yeah, it was an area that was identified by the District to add Buzzard Point because I think there were mixed uses that could accommodate for office space as well.
Okay. So maybe Commissioner Steingasser could shed more light on that, about what's projected.
I don't know of any particular property that's currently pitching for federal, but there are several large developments down there that are currently assessing their program and how, and we're talking like major, you know, full squares of property under single control of large developers that could easily.
Got it.
Make a pitch.
So we don't know that it's happening, but it certainly could. Okay.
It certainly could.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Dupont? Commissioner Dixon?
First of all, I appreciate the work that's being done. I recall, I'll have to reach back, when my Committee on Government Operations in the, back in 1960-something, I guess, did the first comprehensive plan for the city. And believe me, I deep-dived in it, and I was very involved. It was a tough thing to get together for the first time for our city. So I do understand it. I'm not as deep-dived in it now, but I know how much work is involved. Now, having said that, I have several questions. First of all, going to go back to my constant concern about sustainable energy. Is there any reference within this document that speaks to this?
So, as of right now, for the amendments, we're only making changes to the central employment area for the 2016 federal workplace element, but definitely as part of the draft update to the larger element, we have included that, and we're definitely taking that feedback in the revised version.
Yeah, I'm particularly interested in not just solar on buildings that are federally owned, where they might be accommodated, but there are other reusable energy sources that could be included, maybe even wind and maybe on our Potomac River with that stream, maybe, I don't know, there's certainly, that's above my pay grade, but I think there's possibilities that should be considered. I also think that it ought to be listed as a priority in terms of what these comprehensive plan deals with. Energy is going to be a big problem, and I think we better start dealing with it now and put it high on our list and encourage folks to look at options to do it, not pushback. It may not serve the buildings or the places that it's located, but if energy can be put into the grid, it can benefit a lot of folks who may not even be able to afford the energy within our community and other places. So I hope that will be done, and I will try to be around to deal with it. Lastly, at least, the concern I have is the land that is included in the District. I know that you've got joint-based Anacostia building. I know you've got probably Homeland Security, and there may be other federal properties that are already used. But I'm wondering what other properties, what space do you, in a general sense, within this new map, include spaces that have not been historically included but are now? One of them in particular would be the Howard Road area, which is just off the New Douglas Bridge, which there's been some talk about possibly having maybe a federal presence there, which might help and benefit our community. There's also a space across from the Anacostia Metro Station, which will be expanded once that access route is terminated from Howard Road into the Parkway. That will create a larger space availability. There was some hope at one point that Metro might put its headquarters there, but it doesn't need to be downtown. It could be there near a metro station, which it also could enhance with overhead stuff that could do a lot for our community in terms of maybe daycare services, really nice to have one at a metro stop, or other things. So I'm sorry to go on, I'm being verbose today, and I'm sorry. I'll get back to my brief, I have no comments soon, I'm sure. But maybe could you answer that question about the space that might be included now on Anacostia River East, as I call it, R?
Yeah, and I can always put the map back up, but we definitely did include some areas east of the river as part of the revised CEA from what we previously had in our 2016 version. But note that the central employment area currently as it exists, the CEA boundary is contiguous, and so we do note that there are opportunities for federal facilities to locate in these other spaces that you were talking about that may not fall within this red bound, the new red boundary. So, you know, that is still definitely discussions that we're having with the District of what are some other locations, especially east of the river that could be appropriate as federal facilities, I think, moving forward, that may not fall within the boundaries of the CEA.
Yeah, I think that, I'm particularly curious about the Howard Road. It looks like the map, I mean, it's hard to get, dig into it, but it looks like it might include the Howard Road area. I don't know. And also, I would comment, this is a preference, that we say east of the river. Well, I like to give a lot more respect to the Native American spirit of east of the Anacostia River East, which is a very, you know, anyway, I'm sorry, that's just the phrasing. But what about that Howard Road issue?
Sure, and I would have to dub, of course, can you, looking at the map zoomed in?
I could speak to that. Howard Road is included actually in the yellow area.
So, yeah, the expansion would be included as well, then.
Yeah, I think it goes, the new red line, Peter, seems to go a little further to the left.
Right.
Knowing that area, maybe almost over the Sootland Parkway.
Yeah, it, I haven't said it super carefully, but it looks like it extends all the way into the future development along Martin Luther King Boulevard through, you know, where the existing office space is and where the big chair is and those things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You all are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon, and I appreciate all those questions, particularly the ones around sustainable energy, given the experience we had in Texas two weeks ago and that we're continuing to live with the aftermath of an energy failure. So those are really critical questions to keep raising, so no apologies necessary for bringing that to the forefront. So thank you for that.
Madam Chairman, I would also say that I think that some of the issues that are hitting in Texas probably are certainly a global, national, and I think your point is, I think, connects that.
That's exactly right. So thank you for continuing to ask those thoughtful questions, and I'd love to now open it up for discussion if there are no further questions, and I'll start with Commissioner Steingasser and then go in a round-robin format using our normal seating order. So Commissioner Steingasser.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm so happy to see this. This has been a long time coming, the alignment of this map, and I've been with the District Government since 2000, and I would say this is, in the last 10 years, this question of why don't these two elements match between the federal elements and the district elements has been one of the questions I get asked a lot, so I am very happy to see it. I think the mayor's letter of August 19th that's in the packet talks to the importance of the federal government district economy, and I think the CEA further underscores that importance. And I also want to speak directly to the coordination between NCPC staff and OP staff in getting this done and the consultation with GSA and the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development, and how productive that has been, and the opportunity that presented itself by these two sides of the comprehensive plan, the federal elements and the district elements, coming together at the same time. So I really appreciate that, and I thank you for that. And I do want to underscore and agree with Commissioner Dixon about the importance of the CEA being on the east side of the Anacostia River and the opportunities it brings for potential economic development, both direct and indirectly to that part of the city. So I think that's been very important, and I really appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steingasser. Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah, thanks. It's hard to argue against, nor would I, as I agree with the intent here, the proposal to align NCPC's efforts with those of District Columbia, so I fully support the proposed amendment. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Same for me. Fully supportive. I'm glad to know more about the extent of the collaboration between NCPC, DCOP, DEMPED, GSA. I mean, I think that's super important and glad to see it having some concrete results here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Argo?
Let me bring myself up there. Appreciate the presentation. I really just want to echo some of the comments that were, or the bulk of the comments that have been made before me. Thank you for your work on this. I appreciate as well Commissioner Dixon's and agree and appreciate the comments he made about the inclusion of many of the elements east of the river. So it's a lot of good work. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Well, I won't pile on. I agree with everything that's been said already, but I also want to say that I think the Commission is doing a smart thing in delaying substantive edits, if you will, or changes to this element until we know what we're doing. Every AE firm in the country, it seems, is cranking out a slide deck every other week saying they, telling, you know, building owners that they know they've got the magic beans on how to design for post-COVID, and we just don't know yet. The science isn't complete. So aggregating that approach to the federal workplace element is good business, and I'm glad that we didn't feel the pressure to just barge ahead without all the answers to the questions that so many of us have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon, any further comment?
Yeah, I said a lot, but I will make this clear, too. It may not show, but I have picked up a lot of scars from my efforts when we were back in the '70s. Believe me, the federal government was not that connected to helping or being a part of this. It was a battle. It wasn't, it was a struggle more than people might realize to get them to engage. And serving on the Commission, the NCPC, back in those days, also, we had rough trouble with this. It was a constant battle. I'm glad to see we have matured and developed, and I hope we can move forward. The last point I want to make is we don't only want the federal presence in our community in Anacostia River East, but we want, when they come, the expectations that they will be good neighbors and citizens in that community, where they do things to not only carry out their mission, but strengthen their mission by strengthening our community and including our community in things. And we've had mixed reviews recently on that, but I'm hoping that changes. We used to be very close to Coast Guard, we used to be very close to Joint Base Anacostia, but we have found, not just because of the virus, but this different leadership didn't quite place the emphasis on it that they could. And I think that's something, I mean, we used to get them to work with our swimming teams at our pools and help with mentoring, but that has not been the same, and we would like to see it continued and built on, and they being good neighbors as well as being there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
I just want to thank everyone for the work that went into finally aligning these boundaries between the district elements and the federal elements. It's always been one of those outstanding issues that I'm glad we finally came to some clarity on. I want to note that this does fulfill one of the action items that's been in the district elements for a while, that was renewing a request to get these boundaries aligned. And I want to thank for inclusion of the new action item that is in there that talks about continuing to work together with GSA, with NCPC, and the District to continue examining these. And I'll note that the revisions to the comp plan for the district elements are currently before the Council of the District of Columbia. We're hoping to get those adopted in the next few months, and we are planning to include parallel language in our action items in the land use element to explore, expand it, or possible future changes to the CEA. And I really applaud this joint effort and hope that we can keep these boundaries as aligned as possible going into the future. So thank you for all the work on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I also agree with a lot of the comments that are already said, particularly those of Ms. Wright, making sure that we're not making decisions before the science is solved and we're using evidence to make future decisions. Other than that, just thank you, and it was really nice to watch the presentation.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add a couple of comments. I appreciate- I appreciate all of the previous comments and, and echo and support them. I think it makes me reflect on what our role is at National Capital Planning Commission as we serve as this place where the district and the federal agencies can come together and work in common purpose. And I do think that alignment is so important, and I particularly appreciate the reflection on history, Commissioner Dixon, as to, that hasn't always been the case, and everyone recognizing collaboration is hard and it takes, it takes commitment and sustained commitment over time. And I also want to thank the staff, not just in their role and, and policy coordination and the unique role that Ms. Costa has been playing in loan to the district to work hand in hand and the work that Ms. Dupont is leading on the elements themselves. But we also have to think about ourselves as an employer and what this means for our own staff. And we know, we talked a little bit about this with the Executive Committee the other day in that what have these, you know, COVID guidelines done in terms of how we do our own work and think about the meetings that we're having right now and how we're doing this virtually? So I totally appreciate what Commissioner Wright said, that, you know, that we're seeing on a weekly basis, a new set of guidelines. This is what the new future of office space is going to be like. So I think, you know, having the discipline to take that time and push pause and really think this through is really smart. So I just wanted to add my, my comments to the, to the previous ones. And thank you again, Ms. Dupont. And if there are any other questions or comments, I think we can move on and ask for a motion to adopt the updated federal workplace element of the comprehensive plan.
A second.
So Ms. Geiler, can you please confirm the motion and the second, and then take the roll call?
I can. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Dixon moved to adopt the updated federal workplace element of the comprehensive plan, and Commissioner Steingasser seconded it. And I will now take the vote. Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved unanimously, and therefore it passes.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Ms. Dupont. So moving on to Agenda Item 6C is a request to approve the final site and building plans for the Surgery, Radiology and Lab Medicine Building Edition at the National Institutes of Health as submitted by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. Mr. Wile is going to take us through the presentation.
Hi, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission and Madam Chair. In follow-up to their December preliminary submission, the United States Department of Health and Human Services have provided a final submission for their new 547,000 square foot clinical research center addition, known as the Surgery, Radiology and Laboratory Medicine Edition, with new modern space for multiple departments, including the General Radiology and Imaging Services, Department of Laboratory Medicine, and National Cancer Institute. The new space would enable the Clinical Research Center to continue to operate as a premier world-class research facility, which is central to the NIH Research, Health and Wellness Mission. During our previous review, the commission gave preliminary approval to the project with the key comment to reduce the proposed new addition's large visual presence on the site through strategies such as lowering the height of the addition, making design changes to de-emphasize its vertical look, and/or through additional landscaping. Since then, while NIH was not able to physically reduce the scale of the project nor its location, NIH did study a number of design modifications, and I will focus on these changes in my presentation. For context, the National Institutes of Health currently encompasses 310 acres with Rockville Pike to the east, Old Georgetown Road to the west, West Cedar Lane to the north, and residential neighborhoods along its southern edge. The campus is situated immediately to the north of downtown Bethesda with Naval Support Activity Bethesda to the east, Suburban Hospital to the west, and just south of the I-495 Beltway. Starting with three buildings on 45 acres of land in 1938, NIH has grown steadily over the years to approximately 75 buildings and 21,470 total full-time personnel. Prior to designing the new addition, NIH undertook a multi-year study that considered how to accommodate future Clinical Research Center programming through different expansion concepts, which NIH previously detailed at our December commission meeting, ultimately selecting to expand on the northwest side of the research center so that the new space would be next to similar compatible space in the existing building. And this would optimize the functionality and efficiency of future medical research operations at the center. For example, existing interstitial utility and laboratory levels need to connect directly to new interstitial and laboratory spaces to enable the CRC to continue to function as a world-class medical research facility with modern equipment and systems. The amount of new floor space, 547,000 square feet, remains unchanged from the preliminary submission based on modern medical standards and anticipated future demand for clinical research at NIH. The existing project site encompasses an open landscape area adjacent to the west side of the Clinical Research Center's west wing, extending into the current Center Drive alignment, which serves as the campus's primary interior ring road. The site has a modern, moderate slope to the north with an east-west sidewalk between the convent, Center Drive intersection, and a secondary research center entrance. Existing site photos show several outdoor tables and chairs and an outdoor playground area with a mix of evergreen and ornamental trees. Here is a ground view looking across the site toward the east with the west wing of the Clinical Research Center in view. This elevated view looks toward the northeast across the site over the existing playground area with the existing building on the right and Center Drive in the background. Here is a secondary entrance to the center, which would remain adjacent to the new addition, but the area would be more enclosed once the new construction is complete behind where this photo was taken. Finally, this view is looking east toward the south side of the Clinical Research Center's west wing and along the clinical center's existing emergency vehicle and underground garage driveway. Since December, NIH has focused on reducing the visual presence of the addition in response to previous commission comments by considering a number of different design options, some of which had more upper-level metal and glass cladding, as shown here on the slide, with modifications to the size and configuration of the stacked corner glass cubes and use of horizontally oriented glass on the building corners. After reviewing these options with NCPC staff, NIH elected to modify the design using the materials and building elements in the initial preliminary design rather than adding significant new design features as seen here. In particular, NCPC staff felt that more expansive metal or glass paneling did not relate to the rest of the building as well and unnecessarily complicated the building design. The final design, which is shown here using several design changes, both to building elements and to architectural expressions, in an effort to reduce the overall visual scale of the project. First, three building elements were physically lowered. Both the east and west stair towers were lowered by five feet, and one of the upper level parapet walls, the west wing wall, was lowered by three feet from the previous preliminary design. In addition, NIH changed the upper-level darker metal cladding to a narrower glass curtain wall to reflect the sky and dematerialize the look of the top floor visually. And second, NIH reconfigured seven narrow, more vertical-looking windows to three wider windows on the north face of the building, helping to give the addition a more horizontal appearance and also to give the building a more defined top level as previously recommended by the commission. The design does retain a number of its original defining features, however, including the building's glass base, corner glass reveals, its stacked west wing cubes, and the height of the brick facades, which continue to extend above the plane of the roof. Here is an updated rendering of the north-facing facade with changes highlighted in yellow. And here is a comparison of the two rendered designs. Here's a second rendered view of the addition's north side from a ground perspective, where you have a better view of the lowered east stair tower and new upper-level glass curtain wall, replacing the broader metal banding from the previous design on the left. The intent of the new glass curtain wall is to blend with the sky more and visually dematerialize the top floor of the project. Moving over to the west side, here we can see key strategies and the key changes in the lowered west stair tower and west parapet walls, as well as a change in the type of glass in the stacked cubes, moving from a mix of vision and translucent glass into all vision glass with a ceramic frit pattern, as shown in the sample photo to the lower right. The brick facade heights and punched windows would remain the same as in the preliminary design. Here is a revised rendering of the modified addition with the lowered building elements, new vision glass, and retained punched windows and brick facades as previously noted. And here is a side-by-side comparison of the two design renderings. So the final site plan, the project would retain the same features as described in the preliminary submission with a new relocated playground area, a series of elevated bio-retention gardens, and capstone retaining walls with a series of new street trees and several new access walkways. Final landscape plans include a future mix of native and deer drought-tolerant shrubs and grasses that would be appropriate for stormwater retention area use, with 68 new trees made up of evergreens, shade trees and street trees, and additional new trees planted off-site to meet NIH replacement ratios. Overall, the project would increase the total number of trees on the campus per NCPC and NIH guidelines. In response to previous commission comments to reduce the scale of the project, we note that NIH has undertaken a number of design changes to visually reduce the appearance of the project. During the redesign effort, NCPC staff identified one architectural expression, the facade extensions above the roof plane, which would help to further reduce the look of the building in addition to the other changes. However, NIH elected to retain the expression as a key design feature to celebrate how the building meets the sky. And here you can see this effect as you look through the tops of the punched windows. As part of our previous commission action, in addition to revisiting the design of the new building, we also requested additional information on landscaping and lighting and updated project renderings, and we note that the applicant has satisfied this request in the final executive director's recommendation. So with that, here is the executive director's recommendation before you, which summarizes all of the previous points in my presentation. And I would now like to introduce Susan Roberts, who is the NIH Facilities Planning and Programming Branch Chief, and who would like to provide a brief statement on behalf of the project. And then she will introduce Roger Schwabacher, who is the Project Design Manager from HOK, and would like to highlight some of the rationale behind their key design changes since December. And then both Susan and Roger will be available for any questions from the commission after they conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Commissioners. As Michael said, I'm Susan Roberts. I'm the NIH Facility Planning and Programming Branch Chief, and I am eager for this opportunity to return for the final project review for the Surgery, Radiology, Lab Medicine Edition to the NIH Clinical Research Center. I did want to take a moment to reiterate the importance of this project to the cutting-edge clinical research done at the National Institutes of Health and respond to the design concerns we heard in December at the preliminary review. The NIH Clinical Center is the largest hospital in the world operated exclusively for research. Its mission is to provide hope through pioneering clinical research to improve human health. Our patients, physician scientists, surgeons, radiologists, and pathologists benefit from the modern, safe, and functional facilities that enable the NIH Clinical Center mission. The conduct of safely reproducible science requires safe, reliable buildings. The Surgery, Radiology, and Lab Medicine Edition is the National Institutes of Health highest facility priority. The NIH has a critical need to replace the Surgery, Radiology, and Lab Medicine facilities, which are currently located in 40-year-old space that has severe functional space, systems, and structural deficiencies. Additionally, over the last 40 years, biomedical research and its supporting clinical programs have rapidly evolved, changing the criteria for space and infrastructure systems. All of the departments in this project, Surgery, Radiology, and Laboratory Medicine, have undergone a rapid evolution of equipment, and this has had a direct impact on both space requirements and utility systems. The programs must remain connected to the Clinical Research Center for patient safety. They must maintain adjacencies to researchers and shared clinical infrastructure. The project requirements for this project include keeping Departments of Surgery, Laboratory Medicine, and Radiology in contiguous space to avoid fragmented operations, locating the surgeries near the ICU, the step-down unit, and inpatient nursing units to minimize travel distances for the patients, medical staff, patient samples, and medical supplies, and to minimize construction impact on the existing facilities. NIH has conducted multi-year studies to develop this project in which many options were considered. I presented a small sampling of those options in December. As I noted then, the available sites around the Clinical Research Center are limited in size. Due to the need for a wide floor plate and interstitial space, the most cost-effective and least disruptive solution is a new wing. The project concept NIH developed renovates existing space in the Clinical Research Center West Lab Wing to be converted into a hospital support space on four levels and then extend those floors into the new wing. In summary, the programs are currently located in functionally obsolete space that has severe systems and structural deficiencies. These departments are part of a highly specialized research and clinical building in which the functional needs and patient safety requirements have significant impact on the design. These programs must be located in this building to maintain critical adjacencies to other clinical departments and use all other supporting infrastructure such as medical supplies, loading docks, clinics, et cetera, of the existing building. In December, we presented the project design to you and appreciated the discussion and suggestions provided. We took the commission's feedback seriously, and while we could not change the programming of the building, we could refine the design. We spent the last three months working with HOK and NCPC staff doing that. We had many internal discussions and meetings with NCPC staff before preparing this final design submission. I believe HOK has done an exemplary job of finding that balance between functional requirements of this very specialized building and the feedback provided by this commission. I would like to ask Roger Schwabacher from HOK to speak more about the design refinement.
Thanks, Susan. Michael, can you, can you hear me and see me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Roger Schwabacher, Design Principal with HOK's Washington DC office. During our last presentation in early December... During our last presentation in early December, we received clear feedback from the commissioners about their concerns over the apparent size of the building on the site. As Susan mentioned, while we were not able to remove any of the program from the building, since the program was established to provide direct adjacencies between this new building and the existing hospital in order to avoid fragmented operations, we did take seriously the commissioners' comments on modifying the facades of the building so that it would feel less vertical and reduce its visual presence on the site. Over the past few months, we conducted a series of design studies of the facades, including early studies, which Michael noted in his presentation, which made dramatic changes, such as making the top floors of the building clad entirely in glass, with the idea that this would further break down the massing and potentially dematerialize the top floors of the building with reflections of the sky. After consulting with NCPC staff and commissioners, it was agreed that dramatic changes such as this were not required, and that the kit of parts from the original facades were, in fact, correct. We then went on to explore a series of refinements to the original facades. As covered by Michael in his presentation, these included three primary areas that I just want to reinforce. The first was that we practically reduced the overall height of the building in certain areas, which would obviously have a dramatic effect on how it was viewed from the street. The three main areas where we reduced the height, once again, were the west stair tower. The west stair tower is the terminus of the Entry Boulevard coming into the NIH campus for a lot of the employees, so it's a prominent location, and we reduced the stair tower by approximately five feet in height. This was made possible by reducing height over an elevator machine room while still maintaining its functionality. Second, we reduced the height of the east stair tower. So this stair tower was also lowered by approximately five feet, so that the massing of this element would have a stronger relationship to the existing stair tower on the CDC building, which is directly to its east. So these two stair towers were viewed as sort of a portal to that landscape element between the two buildings, and nice to have a relationship between those two elements. In addition, the cladding of the top floor of this area of the building was changed from metal panel to curtain wall. This change was made for a number of reasons. First, the metal panel is predominantly used on the mechanical penthouses, so having it on such a prominent corner was reconsidered. Second, changing the materiality from metal panel to glass curtain wall will have the effect during the day of reflecting the sky and therefore somewhat dematerializing the top floor. The datum line of the brick, which was one floor below where we're adding this curtain wall, will read as a stronger element and will relate more to the existing building of the CDC to the east. The third element of the building that was reduced in height was the brick parapet over the west-facing glass cubes, and this was reduced by approximately three feet. So those are the physical parts of the building that we reduced in height. The second main strategy that we studied on the facades involved changing the glass types, which Michael mentioned. The mixture of vision glass and translucent glass, that I believe Commissioner May noted in our last presentation, which was previously on the building, has been eliminated now. So instead of having a mixture of vision glass and translucent glass, we now just have, on the glass cubes and the glass corners of the building, a consistent vision glass with a ceramic frit pattern on that glass. This will allow views for the occupants of the building while also providing a unified look to the building for areas with different programmatic elements behind that facade. So in some of the glass cubes, we have conference rooms, and some of the glass cubes, we have offices, we have some labs behind the thing, behind those cube facades, and we wanted it to look consistent from the exterior, and the ceramic frit will also help us achieve that, instead of having the mixture of glasses. And then the third area of the facades that was changed concerns the top floor of the building, and the expression of the three fingers, we call them the three fingers of the building, which extend to the north. Instead of the previous design, which had seven windows with strong vertical proportions at the top floors, the design was revised to have three larger punched windows at the top. We feel this expression achieves the desire to create a base, middle, and top to the building. I believe Commissioner Gallis in the last meeting was talking about that, while also having windows with a less vertical proportion. Introducing more glass to the northern facades, we felt was appropriate from a sustainable design viewpoint. Since it is facing north, we can provide more natural light and views to the building occupants while not risking additional heat gain or glare from direct sunlight. So combined with the strong landscape strategy of a series of planted gardens along the pedestrian path, we feel these revisions reduced the visual impact of the building and will provide a compelling new addition to the NIH campus. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wild, Ms. Roberts, and Mr. Schwabacher. Does that conclude the presentation?
That does conclude the presentation.
Thank you. So before we begin the commission discussion, do any commissioners have questions for the staff or our NIH representatives? If so, please remember to turn on your webcam and mic. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I will now open it up to the commission for discussion, and I will begin with Commissioner Wright, and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order, and please remember to keep your webcams on. So Commissioner Wright.
Okay, well, I kind of wish you hadn't started with me, because I am not feeling as friendly towards this project as others may be. And I have to say, for starters, it's very frustrating to, each time, be told how important NIH is in their mission. We know that. We would not, no, I think I speak for all of the commissioners when I say, no one, especially now, would question the importance of NIH's mission, nor, by extension, the programmatic necessity for adjacency. But we still have, you know, a size eight foot trying to fit into a size six shoe, and it's unbecoming. It's frustrating, because we did make a lot of comments over and over again, and the response, to be frank, has been tepid. I can see that some of the changes that we asked to be looked at have been made, but not enough, at least as far as I'm concerned. And to suggest that the landscape plan does something to ameliorate the central problem with this building, which is its looming height and mass, is just not, to my mind, a legit assertion. I'm, I'm, I, I, I think there, I guess what frustrates me most is that we're, again, there's no one on this commission who would, who would question or criticize the mission, and then the location, which demands, nor the program. I get that. Nobody was asking for programmatic changes, but there were design changes that could have been made. I understand from the presentation, although I did not hear this from staff, that they were, they made some suggestions that were rejected. And I think that's a shame, because especially, you know, the roof, the kind of scooping out the parapet might have helped. And I still find the glass at the, this heavy use of glass at that corner is just odd. And, and, and the kit of parts, I don't agree that a base, middle, and top have been well-established. I'm not sure that I think that's, I think Commissioner Gallis made that comment, if I recall, all in service of reducing the mass of this building. And again, I understand the location, I understand the limited, the limited area for it, and the program that's set. I understand all of those things. But there are, there were grace notes of design that could have helped. I'm not going to vote against this, because, to be honest, I don't have much faith that that would do anything, but I would urge NIH to be more responsive. This is not, again, it's not, I don't believe that NCPC is trying to tread on the, on the program, the programmatic needs, the expertise of NIH in filling their mission. What we're trying to say is that, in this project and others that we have seen in the decade that I've been on the commission, just try harder to be a good neighbor and a good steward and, and be more responsive in the future. I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
I'm waiting to hear the rest of the commissioners' comments, but thank you very much. I'll stay tuned.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
I do appreciate the work that went into trying to at least shave a few feet off this building. I mean, it still has that issue where it's bulky and it's tall in the context of the site, so I appreciate the work that was done, but I will say, as the District of Columbia Council representative, I think that we are all for making sure we are not making things too tall or bulky in the context. So I'm not going to vote against it. I agree with many of Commissioner Wright's comments, but it's a tough site, and I definitely appreciate the mission. But thanks for the few feet you were able to shave off.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
I don't have any comments or thoughts. Thank you for the opportunity.
Commissioner McMahon.
There it is. Okay. Commissioner Wright, I guess I'm sort of underwhelmed by the changes they brought back. They were significant, I realize it, but I see the impact as being marginal, but like, I'm sure the other commissioners are going to say, I'm not going to vote against it. I will note this conversation about, well, we have to do it this way because we're NIH. You know, we had that conversation over a year ago, I think, regards to the master plan amendment that they put through that led to this important project. And in actuality, at that time, NIH leadership made some significant changes to their master plan that supported the overall goals of NCPC and the region when it comes to sustainable design, to transportation, all those issues. And I wish they had taken some more time to work this with the NCPC staff to make some more effective changes. Thank you.
Commissioner May.
Okay, so I agree with Commissioner Wright and with many of the other comments that have followed about, the underwhelming is a very polite word for what we've seen in terms of the changes and improvements. And I would also underscore that, you know, the commission does not have, I mean, we're, we completely understand NIH's mission, and we completely understand the programmatic necessities. And I think, you know, we went through this before a bit about why things are where they are, as opposed to some of the other options that were considered and dismissed. And, you know, at the time, I recall saying that, you know, I appreciate the fact that you've reached this conclusion, and it's, you know, I thought it was unfortunate because we have too much building on too small of a site, but I wasn't going to question that. So then the issue becomes not one of NIH's mission and not one of programmatic connections or any of that. It becomes, how do you make this building something that fits well within the context? And the overwhelming message there was one that, you know, was pretty simple, that the building comes off as not only too big, but too tall in that context, and it is celebrating its height rather than trying to emphasize or make moves that are more about horizontal, the horizontality of the design, rather than the verticality of it. And, you know, certainly more clarity of the composition when it comes to base, middle, and top would have helped tremendously. But what we've got instead is a little bit of height reduction and some exploration of what happens at the top of the building, and some tweaks, a little more glass, a few less, you know, vertical divisions on one facade and one facade only. I, you know, I mean, yes, this is better than that interim design that was shown on one of the slides, but it's still not very responsive to the context, and it is not very responsive to the comments of the commission. And I, you know, I am reluctant to vote against this, because I don't want to stand in the way, and I also don't know, I mean, in the bigger scheme of things, how important it is at this point to be dwelling on the design, but I can tell you, I am not just underwhelmed, I am extremely disappointed in NIH and their direction to this design team, and I am disappointed in a design team that I've worked with in the past, not necessarily these individuals, but a firm that I've worked with in the past quite successfully, and this is, I think, a very poor representation of the talents of this firm.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
For the record.
Sorry, what was that comment, and who was it from?
Sorry, that was Commissioner Wright, and I second Mr. May's comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Yes, I don't, there's probably, I would like to align myself with the comments of the commissioners before me, particularly Commissioner, particularly Commissioner Wright and Commissioner May. I think that there was a sentence that I believe was articulated by Commissioner Wright that sort of says it all, "The grace notes of design that could have helped." There were no, there were grace notes of design that could have helped that we didn't see, and I think that was also referred to in different ways by Commissioner May. So I don't think there's much else to say, again, if I'm aligning myself with the comments that have come before me. It doesn't seem, I guess I'm a little surprised at the, and being one of the newer commissioners, others might not be surprised, but I'm a little surprised at the lack of attentive response on behalf of the applicant and its design firm. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. I would just say, I think it's really clear what the consensus of the commission is in response to the design, and I hope that as we continue to work with NIH, that these will be taken under consideration, and we can continue to try and move forward to achieve common goals. And with that, I would ask if there are any further comments or questions on this item. And hearing none, is there a motion to approve the final site and building plans?
Make a motion to approve the final site and building plans.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon, and thank you, Commissioner Argo. Madam Secretary, would you please confirm the motion in a second and then call the roll?
Yes.
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Dixon and the second by Commissioner Argo and with that, Commissioner Steingasser.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner May. Commissioner May?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Well, no, and all I said is, yeah, I'm here.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't get my vote yet. I will vote in favor, but I think my true feelings about this matter are pretty clear.
My apologies for going too quickly. Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Vice Chair White.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes, with prejudice.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Cash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Abstain.
One abstention, all the rest voted affirmatively, so the motion is approved.
Thank you, everyone. So next is an information presentation on a project the commission will review in the near future. Agenda item 7A is an information presentation on the Humphreys Engineer Center Maintenance and Supply Facility and Master Plan Update. We will be hearing from Ms. Hare.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me and see my presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is here to provide an update on the ongoing work at the Humphreys Engineer Center in Alexandria, Virginia. Next month, they are submitting the maintenance and supply facility for your review and we requested that they give this information presentation to help you understand the proposed location and the status of the ongoing master plan. I will give a brief overview of the campus and the proposed facility and master plan issue and then I will turn it over to Trent Darling from the Army Corps of Engineers to go into more detail on the campus. The Humphreys Engineer Center is a 583-acre campus established in the early 1980s that is overseen by the Humphreys Engineer Center Support Activity, a distinct field operating agency of the Army Corps. The campus contains a small number of office and support structures clustered at the center and surrounded by woods. The campus is accessible from an access control gate on Telegraph Road and is transected by Jeff Toddway. The campus consists of four main buildings, Kingman, Cood, Casey, and Hall clustered in the center area. The Army Corps submitted a draft master plan over the summer, but staff determined that it was missing too many critical elements for commission review and advised the Army Corps to revise it accordingly. In the interim, you approved the preliminary phase of the Training Support Facility, TSF, and the final phase of the first of the Battalion Operations Facilities, the BOF. As noted here, the Army Corps is proposing the Maintenance and Supply Facility in the northwest corner of the campus, near the intersection of Telegraph Road and Jeff Toddway. Mr. Darling will go into more detail on this, but initial developable area analysis has showed this area was ideal for such industrial uses. Now I will turn it over to Trent Darling from the Army Corps of Engineers to give you additional information on the campus and the projects.
Thank you, Jamie. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Trent Darling. I'm the U.S. USA's Program Manager for Humphreys Engineer Center. The purpose of the presentation is to provide information on the Maintenance and Supply Facility for First Capabilities Integration Group, which I'll call FERC, because that's easier to say, and the installation's initial master planning efforts. A couple of quick bullets before I get started. Currently, there is no projects programmed, planned, or designed that will bring additional population to Humphreys Engineer Center. All current program projects over the next 10 years unpack the FERC headquarters, which is the Hall Building, which is extremely overcrowded. Our reforestation plan is lacking and we are incorporating NCPC's guidance that we got during the master planning review. Every design and planning effort taken since 2018 is with maintaining or improving the beauty of this campus at HECC. It is truly a gem for USA, so we want to keep it that way. This slide shows some of the existing conditions at HECC. It has a 70s feel to it with mature trees and well-maintained landscaping. The hover head on the right shows the existing roads and buildings along with two creeks that impact the area. Piney branch run bisects the campus from northwest to southeast and Dog Creek is to the west. All stormwater flows into these creeks. HECC has one operating gate and two 20 mile an hour roads with Leap Road being the entrance road and Kingman Road giving access to the southeast and northwest. The current campus consists of four primary buildings, which Jamie gave you an overview of, but I want to highlight the Hall Building. This is the building that's severely overcrowded and as the mission grew with it, their facility did not require significant investment. Also, I want to highlight the current industrial area of the facilities in the southeast corner of the installation where the majority of the delivery trucks, which include semis, access the industrial area by going through the main campus. These buildings consist of warehouse, mail receiving, grounds, maintenance, and those types of activities. As part of the master planning process, we would like to relocate these uses to the northwest corner to create an industrial cluster. This will allow us to create new space for admin and training. Jamie, next slide, please. This slide shows the topography, generally speaking, the terrain slopes to the southeast over to the creeks, the highest elevations being the area near Telegraph Road, which also happens to be our best soil conditions. Our test drilling has confirmed that we can do shallow foundations up there versus the deep foundations we have to do in the lower southeast side of the campus. Lower elevations like the area around the FERC headquarters, they're very poor soils, high water table making site construction cost up to 34% of the total project, project cost. But obviously, it's an area that we'd like, we obviously are improving in with the TSF and BOF. Next slide, please. This slide shows some of the environmental concerns, the different wetland classifications can be seen throughout the installation and line up with the topography and get weather to the southeast and around the creek beds. As part of the master planning effort, we conducted floodplain analysis, which as far as we could tell, had never been conducted before on HECC. We conducted a full stormwater survey and modeling to assess the current and future impacts on the installation. We also conducted wetland delineations once we realized our wetland, wetland mapping was horribly lacking. Jamie, can you point out the orange areas next to the Hall Building where the MSF was originally sited? This was the original location of the MSF that we also identified, so when we, we also identified wetlands at east of the Casey Building parking lot and to northwest near the gas line when we were investigating all your sites for the MSF. The environmental areas and some of the, some of the areas where steep slopes really pushes into limited areas which, which can actually support new facilities. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to discuss some of the initial master planning efforts. This slide shows one of the main deliverables was to determine the developable areas on the installation. This was done solely to ascertain what was developable and work out a logical use. Looked at the environmental constraints, the tenant's mission, the current campus, current design efforts, and even remotely possible future tenants. The area west of Jeff Toddway has no planned or program purpose other than showing it can be developed. One of the priorities of the HECC leadership was to develop an industrial warehouse area that was separate from the main campus. Currently, all deliveries pass through the entire campus to the south, the southeast, seen in the blue area labeled 2-5. It was identified that the area closest to Telegraph and Jeff Toddway, shown in the purple area labeled 2-5, would make it easier for incoming and outgoing large trucks to come into the installation, pass through security, do what they need to do, and then exit the installation without impacting any of the admin portion of the campus. Outside of the MSF, all currently programmed projects are to be consolidated on the soccer field, which is a spoil site for the Hall Building construction. It includes the Training Support Facility and the Battalion Operations Facility, wherein the area vacated once the warehouse functions are moved into the industrial area. Ultimately, the approved site for the MSF was the future industrial area. It was the best fit as part of the initial master planning effort and investment into the infrastructure for the area. For example, the plan with Dominion is to bring a separate feed onto the campus, which will provide two electrical feeds. Given the criticality of the mission of the Cood and Hall Building, this is a very important improvement to the infrastructure. The master planning team understood that this new industrial area was a well-trade area, but given the other environmental constraints, the available, developable land, and the requirement to expand the campus, it made the most sense to us. The site has better access to the main road and prevents truck traffic and what the long-term vision is of a walkable campus. Next slide, please. This slide shows two of the active bunkers, or two active bunkers, an old warehouse that's not being used, the only entry gate and a gas line, a wetland, and a wetland that impacted our sighting. There's also a stormwater pond at the intersection of Telegraph and Jeff Toddway. Once we determined that the original site was not viable due to this significant wetland, we worked diligently to decide on a new site. Conducted additional geotech surveys, utility investigations, wetland delineations, forest end delineations, and worked with the master planners to make sure we were taking the campus vision into consideration, ultimately deciding on the planned industrial area. Given the size of the building, the activities and the function and the campus and the, in the impact of the campus, USA's approved the site that you see on this slide. With the approved site, a significant effort was taken for the best orientation of the MSF as possible. We closely looked at ways to obscure the view from the main roads. This would help maintain the campus feel but also help provide screening for any specialized activities as much as possible. We looked at maximizing the old road to avoid cutting as many trees as possible, but where in the gas line, we had, we had to look at the terrain, which drops off and slopes to the west. It was determined that having the shortest side of the building parallel to Telegraph would provide the best screening. Maximize the current road and avoided the wetland. Stormwater pond and METS ATB standards for the skip that's inside this building. We recognize the significant stormwater and tree mitigation are needed and we are working with BDEC and NCPC to ensure that these are addressed. Our initial efforts with NCPC showed that our reforestation plan was lacking and we are working to add the center design to have it identified several areas on campus for reforestation, the majority of which is located on the far southeast of the installation. Future facilities that might require tree cutting of the installation master plan will mandate tree reforestation in accordance with NCPC and local guidelines. Next slide, please. Last, I just wanted to discuss the additional efforts of the installation development plan. Our master planner, working with NCPC, has identified the critical pieces that are missing. These efforts are being worked and resourced to complete this plan for your approval over the next couple of years. USA's leadership is fully supportive of that effort to bring to completion. This is the current timeline for execution, though I think we can get at a lot of these critical pieces sooner, especially things like a traffic study and infrastructure assessments. We will may also make sure NCPC is involved at the proper time and not spring the plan on you when it's complete. I would like to thank everyone for their patience as we seem to be building the plane while it's in the air, all the people providing input as we work to keep this gem of an installation as beautiful as possible, at the same time, support some of the most critical missions that support our national security.
So to recap, the Army Corps has submitted the MSF for review at the April meeting and will begin the master planning process later this year. I'm happy to answer any questions and Trent and his staff are also here for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hare and Mr. Darling. Before we begin the commission discussion, does anyone have any questions for the staff or the presenter? Hearing none, I'll now open it up to the commission for discussion and I'll start with Commissioner Dixon and then go in a round robin format. Commissioner Dixon.
Appreciate the presentation. No, no comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Same. Thanks for the presentation. Very informative.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Same for me. Thanks for everything.
Commissioner Steingasser.
I concur. Thank you for the presentation. I have no specific questions.
Commissioner McMahon.
Good presentation. I appreciate it and thank you. I have no questions.
Commissioner May.
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Argo.
Same here. No questions or comment, comments at this time and thank you for taking the time to share this with us today.
Commissioner Wright.
No comments or questions at this time.
Well, thank you, everyone. I also extend my thanks for coming in and sharing us, sharing with us these plans and appreciate the sensitivity toward really what's a beautiful wooded site. So I know it has its challenges. So thank you, Ms. Hare, for the presentation and Mr. Darling. And with this agenda item, this concludes our March 4th commission meeting. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 1st, 2021. This will also be an online meeting. There's information at www.ncpc.gov on how to view or participate in our online meetings. And commissioners, I would ask you, please remember to exit the meeting using the last icon on the team's toolbar. And if there is no other business to come before us, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.